Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, April 6th at 7:05 PM. The first agenda item tonight is a public hearing for Michael Grosier. It's case number 2022-0216 Brookside Drive. The date of application was March 8. The following was posted in the Town Hall and also was printed in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette and it read as follows. "The town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, April 6th, 2022 in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Michael Grosier is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas Bylaws for setback relief under Dimensional Regulations Appendix B to build a deck in a VR zone district. The property is located at 16 Brookside Drive, MAP 170, parcel 9. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated." Hearing and voting on this case tonight would be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forgett, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Bombard is joining us by Zoom and myself. Mr. Holland has an unexcused absence. I have notification from our clerk that all the certified mailings have been returned and the public hearing is now open. Sir, would you like to tell us about your request?
Sure. So we're just trying to build a deck on the back of our house. Our house is pretty close to the back property line and with the deck, it would not meet the 20-foot setback. So our house is kind of at an angle to the back property line and in our proposal, we're proposing a 12-by-12 deck. And it is closest to deck would be about 10 feet from the property line. So we're seeking a variance for that.
Okay. And I think in our packet, there's the application and also, I believe, there's a plot plan in here as well. There's actually a plan. It's like a copy of the assessors map. Sir, are you sure of these dimensions? Because in the event that it's granted, you're going to have to conform and it looks like it's handwritten and not to scale.
So, I mean, we measured ourselves. We didn't have the property surveyed, but, you know, we measured as best that we could. There's a stone wall that is our property line. So that's what we were basing the measurements off of.
Okay. Ken, would you require a certified plot plan for this?
I mean, I think at the end of it, if it was granted, that we would need a, you know, a certified plan just to put in the records for it.
Mr. Chairman, we have been requesting that we get a certified plot plan because we have had errors in the past on the assessors' plans. And it's kind of hard to make a decision not knowing exactly where it's at. I don't know if they have an opportunity to go to the Board of Health. They may have some things with their subject design that have actually a proper plan.
Is your home on a septic system, sir?
Yeah, we're in public water.
Oh, you are? Okay.
That defeats that idea.
Yeah. Most often, we're looking for a plot plan that's other than handwritten, something done by a surveyor that we can... Because if you were granted and then you are not too close, you're going to have a problem.
It's going to have to be done, I would think, for the building permit. You're not going to let them build it and then get a survey of the plot plan. If it was built, it would be built at his own risk because it would have to come back to me with a certified plot plan on it, which you only get before I sign off on it.
You might find, maybe they have more land than they really do, except for where they visit from, you know?
I'm not comfortable without a plot plan.
Okay. Well, sir, anybody would like to... Has any comments about this application?
The comment I have is if we don't have a certified plot plan of some sort, it's hard to make a decision because I'm not convinced that that's accurate.
I agree. I feel the same way, just, you know.
All right.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Ron.
Do you have a plot plan for that house that's there?
Oh, no. He gave us one off the assessors' map.
So are we not... Are we looking at this one that this is wrong on the assessors' map?
I don't know. Is it right?
I just question, in fact, I still don't know if it's right or wrong.
If it's off at all, he's looking for relief to be 10 feet from the property line. He's required to have 20 feet from the property line.
Right, yeah.
If by chance that house is further back and we grant it to him and he builds his deck at his own risk, as the building officials suggesting, it's going to be a big problem. And typically, we ask... This is... And this has come up before. And actually, I made a request that these applications get reviewed to make sure we have a plot plan, a certified plot plan, before we get to it so we don't have this problem. Because it puts the applicant in the predicament and it puts us at a major disadvantage to make a proper decision without having something that really shows where it is.
Well, what am I not understanding? To build this house, you had to have a plot plan, right?
I don't know. When was it built? He didn't build it.
That's... To me, it has nothing to do with the question.
Okay.
When he built the house, he had to have a plot plan, right?
Okay, let's assume that he does. I need to see it in order to make a decision. Does that make it easier? I'm not trying to be difficult with them, but I don't know where the house is. I don't...
Well, I guess...
If you... Prior to you coming on, and let me explain something to you. Prior to you coming on, there was a house that came in and they wanted to put an in-law apartment on the left-hand side. It was a buttered Martin Park. And their proposal was they were going to be three feet from the property line. Okay? And I insisted that they get a plot plan. They came back and withdrew their application. They're going to put it on the right-hand side because they found that their house was seven feet further to the left than it was. So if we had granted them the relief that they asked for, they would have been seven feet into the park. That's what's prompting me to ask for a plot plan. It's only... It's for their protection as well.
Yeah.
Not trying to be difficult, not trying to make them spend money, but if they intend to put... Wait, maybe just email for a second. If they intend to build a deck, they're going to need the plot plan. So I don't understand where the confusion is. You're going to have to get it anyways. So why wouldn't you get it to confirm that your house is actually where you're stating it is? They don't know any more than we do. They're going by the assessors' map.
The other thing is we could... If they were granted a variance of 10 feet and they have it surveyed prior to getting a permit and they're closer than they think they are, then they could build a 10-foot deck instead of a 12-foot deck.
Or they could have more land than they think and not need a permit from us at all, or more from us. So I'd make this suggestion. Well, you had a plot plan, we'll get this over with and bring it back next time for us.
Well, John, Dan brings up a valid point, that if we granted them relief so they could be within 10 feet of their red property line, they should get it surveyed ahead of time because if they get it done after the fact, they're going to be shortening up their deck.
Yeah, because we wouldn't... We're not approving the size of the deck. We're approving the distance from the lot line to the deck.
On that thought process, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. Do you understand what we're discussing, sir?
Yes.
So if your dimensions are off, you're going to be held to a 10-foot setback, which means your deck may be smaller if your measurements are wrong. As long as you understand that, I guess we could move forward.
So I do understand that. What if we were to request a five-foot setback?
Then you'd have to re-advertise because it was advertised as a 10-foot, so we couldn't go less. We could go further away from the property line.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it was advertised at 10 and that's what we have to... That's the case we have to hear.
And either way, we're going to have to get the property surveyed, you're saying?
I don't know if you have to get it surveyed. You just have to have a surveyor confirm the distance from the back of your house to the lot line behind where the deck's going to go.
Okay.
Sooner or later, you're going to need it in order to construct the deck because the building inspector is going to... From what he said, he's going to want an "as" bill showing where it's actually placed on the lot.
Okay.
So you're going to have to do it at some point.
Okay, so I guess we would probably prefer to do that first, just so we know for sure what the dimensions are and then bring it back to you guys.
Okay. Yep. Are you requesting a continuance?
I would say, I think, if they're willing to grant the 10-foot variance, then we would take that as our responsibility to get it surveyed. And then if we do want to come back again, if we need it to, we could. But if it's going to meet our needs, somebody wants to come back, we get a variance now.
If you've got a variance now and then you want it to go closer, you'd have to be a new application and you would have to re-advertise it and, you know, I mean, if you wanted to get a continuance, get that information so that you were comfortable with it, then we could deal with...
Yeah, I think maybe we will do the continuance.
Okay. You don't need a survey of the whole property. You just need a survey to tell you the exact distance from where you're going to build the deck to your real lot line so that... So everything's the way it should be.
Okay.
So, all right. So I guess we're on camera. Normally, we get a written request for a continuance, but that's not doable right now, so...
Email it in the...
Yeah. Could you email it into the community development office? Just a request. We'll move forward with it. But if you could email that request in. And also, in granting you the continuance, we also ask for an additional 30 days to make the decision. Not that we need it, it's just that it's available if need be.
Okay. Could you tell us the email address to send that to?
Okay, jaykretcher@douglasbytonmass.
I don't see her on any of this paperwork.
Jay. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
J dot...
Maybe someone could write it in the chat box?
You know what? Why don't we do this? Her phone number is 476-4000, extension 206.
Okay.
I don't want to give you misinformation.
206, Matt Benoit, 257 is...
251.
251?
She's 251.
Jenna? Jenna's 257 and Jackie is 251, okay.
All right.
257.
We'll try this again. So if you call her tomorrow, 476-4000, extension 251, she'll give you her email address and you just ask for a 30-day extension and you'll grant us an additional 30 days to make the decision. If all goes well, you'll have a decision at the end of next meeting.
Okay.
All right. All right. So we have a request for a continuance.
All right, thank you. So we're all sat here?
Yes. So we have requests.
You're about to do it, right?
Yeah. From the applicant for a continuance. We need a motion on that to accept it.
Make a motion to accept their continuance for 30 days?
Till our meeting on May 4th.
May 4th for case number 2022-02.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second on the...
7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM, yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, the second by Mr. Palmer, to grant them a continuance until May 4th at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Want to do a vote?
We will. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forgett.
Patrick Guy.
Joe Lomar, aye.
Okay. Continuance is granted. The next agenda item is the public hearing continued from March 2nd, 2022. Rebecca Laramie, case number 2022-01, 17 Huff Road. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board.
Just for the minute taker, if you could give us your full name.
Sure. Donald Keavany, K-E-A-V-A-N-Y. Christopher Hayes, Wojcik and Mabricos, on behalf of the applicants, Rebecca Laramie, David Laramie.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Floor is yours.
Nice to see you all again. On March 30th, I believe, I emailed a revised plot plan that, in response to our... The meeting we had back in the first week of March, showing the location of the proposed cabana as it relates to the different structures in the backyard, including most importantly, or significantly, the septic tank. And as you will see on the plan, if you don't have it, I brought extra copies, so if anyone needs it, please let me know. Okay. So it's as it's currently proposed, it's 12 feet 1 inches from the septic tank. And I know Ms. Laramie did meet with the Title V gentleman from the town and he says, so long as you stay outside of 10 feet from the tank, you should be all set. This plan, though, does... Is reflective of the sonotubes and I know there was some discussion about the overhang, so we can certainly submit a revised plan to reflect the overhangs. But right now, it's 12 feet 1. We are obviously very concerned about going much closer to the septic tank than where we are, but we're certainly willing... This document here reflects a movement of 5 feet from what was originally proposed and we're willing to go another half foot. So that would really... That would bring that left corner, I guess, the northwest corner of the cabana to about 10 feet 2 inches off of the snow boundary line. And the northeast corner would be approximately 8 feet 6 inches off of the snow property boundary line. And again, that would move the sonotube 6 inches closer, so we'd be about 11 feet plus minus to the septic tank. And we'd want to give ourselves a little wiggle room there and don't want to be right on top of it. So that's kind of... That's where we are as a revised proposal. And I did want to share with you, kind of to address the issue of the detrimental... The neighborhood. And I've got a photograph that you could share that right over there. If you could just share that. And this is a photograph taken from 2013 from... It's a Google Maps photograph. And it shows that really that telephone pole is pretty much on the property line and you can see the right... That chicken spigot we've been talking about and the old shed we've been talking about on the right-hand side of the telephone pole. And also, what's I think significant about this photograph is to the left of the telephone pole, and that's the shed that's on our butter's property. We don't have an objection to that, never had an objection to that. But it's a rather large shed that sits based off of this photograph. And again, we haven't had the measurements done, but just on the basis of the photograph, pretty much straddles the boundary line with the Laramies. So again, I rely on everything I said at our prior meeting, that the proposed structure, again, is further modified by what we submitted on March 30th, but it's the March 17 plan. Again, there's a replacement structure of three prior structures and, including all those affidavits we submitted, is not substantially detrimental... More detrimental to the neighborhood than the prior three structures and does fit in nicely with this particular neighborhood in Douglas. So we respect the request that the revised submission be approved. Certainly available for any questions.
Okay. Any board members have questions on this application?
Items. This one that you came with last month, the plot plan?
Yeah.
Who was that... Who did that?
Yes, I don't think that's a... That's not a plot plan. That was a sketch.
The sketch illustrating where the components of the septic in relationship...
Right, that was...
Relationship to the house. Who did that?
That was the septic tank installer. And then again, that was not done on... Based off of a complete dig-up of the backyard, which they did after we met, to confirm the location of the septic tank. So that was not a...
Okay, so the septic tank. It's clear the septic tank is pretty close to it.
Yeah.
To the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm more interested in the leach pit.
Okay.
On the other plan? No, that's a leach field on that one. On this one here, it says it's a leach pit. Now it's a leach field. The distance that you... That this is provided, I'm assuming that this was a Title V inspection. It's on an official report. It says AE, which would be from the corner of the house to the leach pit, is 59 feet 4 inches. If you take the dimensions of 16, 8, 24 feet and 9.3, you come up with 50.1 feet. So there's a difference of nine feet in it. So you have two different type of leaching systems on two different plans that were done 18 days apart, or actually, a little more than that, about a month apart. Which one is it?
Yeah, so I think what we submitted back in, I think on March 3, was a quick sketch that was done by our Title V... By the company that performs the Title V inspections and was done without... To kind of give us an idea, I think, as I said to you when we were back in March 3, as to where the different components were. Because there was no plan on record at the Town Hall. So what was submitted on March... The plan dated March 17th is a fair and accurate representation as to where the tank is as it relates to the house and where the leach field is as it relates to the system. That's the best answer I can give you. Other than, again, it's not... While it's on that piece of paper, that what was submitted on March 3, it was not part of a formal Title V examination, Title V report. It was done by our septic tank servicer to help us identify where the different components of the septic system was. But as a result of our meeting, we, the Laramies, spent some additional monies to have the yard dug up to locate where these different components were and they are reflected in the March 17 plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else has any questions on this application? I just have something. I mean, we're close. And if... It appears that you do have a couple feet to play with here between the proposed cabana and the septic tank. It's at 12.1 and Title V says you've got to be 10.
Correct.
So...
And we're offering to go to 11... 11.7? 11.7 from that tank, another 6 inches. Right.
Your point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So I just jotted down what you had written in your letter, counsel.
Yeah.
In your letter, you said, she is willing to move it an additional 6 inches to the south, which will result in the northwest corner sonotube being 10 feet 2 inches. So could you just clarify?
Sure.
11-something and 10.2, so just explain the difference.
No problem. Because we're talking about two different points. The letter refers to the distance between that northwest corner and the snow boundary line and what I think Mr. Heaney was just talking about with the distance between the southeast, southwest corner line and the tank.
No, I just want to clear for the record.
Yeah.
Because, right, you're talking about different things, different parts of the letter.
Yeah.
I think I could be comfortable with this if you could keep it 10 feet from the lot line, its closest point.
It will be 10. It will be with... This plan, right now, shows 9.8.
Right.
We've got it... This was dated March 17th.
The closest point is 8.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 8.2. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, 8.2.
And it looks like you can still legally conform to the tank if you make that instead of 8.2, made it even 10.
I'd be happy to have.
And again, in the letter, it says it'd be 8 inches.
Well, you wanted to move 6 inches.
Which would put it up to the 8.8. So we're talking about a difference of 1 foot, 4 inches. Yeah, 1 foot, 4 inches.
Have you talked to Stephen Donatelli recently about this since last meeting?
Yes, Ms. Laramie spoke to Mr. Donatelli and showed him this plan, I believe, and talked to him about it and he said, stay out... Stay beyond 10 feet from this tank and you'll be... And you should be all set.
What did he say about the leach field?
He... Go ahead.
He said, I showed him the plans and he said that that was fine, that the tank is where the regulations came from.
Well, I had a conversation with him today. Okay, I called him today. Because the regulations says that you have to be a minimum of 10 feet from the leach field as well as the tank. That's what the Title V... Unless you have a basement, then you have to be 20 feet from the leach field and you can still be 10 feet from the tank. So I explained to him that you were coming in today. I said, and hopefully, we're reaching a conclusion to this. But your plan proposes 9 foot 3 inches, 9.3 feet, I'm sorry. And he said he didn't have a problem with that. He says, because you're putting in... He says, provided that it remains just an open structure with... I told him that it had a roof structure that was open on all four sides. He says, as long as it doesn't go closer, I don't have a problem with that. And as long as the sides stay open, so it doesn't become a habitable space, other than using it for a picnic or whatever you're using it for.
Right.
So you have room... You need 1.8 feet, right? So you could... In the suggestion of the chairman to try to get closer to the 10 feet, you could easily move over 1.8 feet because you have a certified plan, so you know exactly where you are now. So why wouldn't you just move it over 1.8 feet? And then everybody's happy and everybody goes home. When you were here last month... Just let me finish for a second. You were all set to go with 12 feet. You all went out in the other room, you came back in. I said, I cautioned you and I said, you want to really make sure your components are there because if we grant you the 12 feet and if we did, this was junk. You wouldn't have been able to do it because you were too close now because you would have been even further over. You would have been 8 feet from that tank. You would have been eight feet from that tank by the time you got done." So if we could come over closer, I for one would be a little more comfortable with it, because I would like to see 10 feet from the property line. It just, on these challenging lots, that's typically my feelings on them. So that's what my suggestion would be. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but you have 2.1 feet, I'm asking you to go 1.8 feet. That still leaves you, it's tight, but you had a survey, and everybody knows exactly where it is, because you dug up everything. So you have the house, have plenty of points to pull off of. You should be easily, and it should be pretty easy to achieve that, 10 feet off the property line.
Go ahead, Ron.
Are you talking at 9.8 foot?
Nope, down the bottom, the 8.2.
8.2.
The opposite corner.
The 8.2. You just slide that over.
With the property line.
And then it works.
Instead of coming out closer, make that even down the property line.
So this thing here would have to be moved over this way.
Right.
They're going to move it anyway, so...
Moving it south by 1.8.
1.8 feet further than where you are. You're still two feet less than what you proposed last, last month. You proposed 12 feet last month.
Respectfully, I never proposed, you proposed 12 feet, because that was the 50% rule. I'd never, if we were going to agree to 12 feet, we wouldn't be coming back. I don't, if that's what was heard, that certainly wasn't, was intended to come out of my mind.
Could you please pass this to him? I believe that's this individual right there. Can you have him look at the minutes? We haven't approved these minutes yet, but this is what the minute taker heard. So if you could read that, maybe that'll help you clarify.
Right, so that was in response to the discussion above about moving 12 feet. And the question was, Attorney Cavani asked the board if the structure gets moved 12 feet from the snow lot line as was being proposed with the current dimensions of the structure, will the board approve the building permit? And I don't, that, I think, is a typo. I think it was the building inspector, because the board doesn't approve the building permit. So I, that was my memory of the context of that conversation. But I don't, I don't think it frankly, I don't think matters.
It's not going to make a big...
We're discussing 10 feet tonight, so...
It's just a point.
I'm responding to what was brought to my attention.
Understood, okay.
Okay.
Yep. So it appears you have enough members that are comfortable with 10 feet, that we can put this to rest.
I'm comfortable with it, Mr. Chairman, 10 feet.
From the lot line.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And I think, I think it's tight, but I think you still have room to make it work.
Right, and I guess the concern, the only, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine.
So the only, the concern I have is, well, let me do this. Can we take a two-minute break, and let me consult with my clients?
Sure.
And we can come right back.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, that was in my back.
See what I'm saying? See how this is 98?
Yep.
This is E2.
Yeah.
If this is 98, make this 98. Square it, so that we have an even line. You don't need to get...
At the next meeting, we're putting, if it goes through, they're putting in the...
If you go down there and look at that, I mean, this is all woods over here.
It's roostria.
Yeah, it's a roo, well, it's a high bank in there.
No, there's no bank. Just roostria is the other house right there.
Yeah, yeah, the house over here.
Slide it in the book.
Does it make that much friggin' difference?
Well, maybe we can just address a couple other things while there.
Yep.
I'm just going to jump ahead to item number four on the discussion. And that is, we have been charging applicants $5 per certified mailing that we have to mail to the abutters. And our clerk said that certified mail is now $7.33. So we're actually losing $2.33 per abutter. So I don't know if we can vote to just increase it to the...
Yeah, why not?
Cover cost. And there's no reason we should, you know, lose money on it.
Right.
So if somebody wants to make a motion to increase our mailing cost to the applicant from $5 to $7.33.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Forget. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Palmer, so...
A talking by Mr. Bombara.
Yeah, John did too, so.
And did, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Forget, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Okay, so all in favor of increasing the mailing?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Hennig.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick aye.
Boba aye.
Okay, that's done. And then there was, this hasn't been an issue, but just trying to be proactive. The board, a few years back, voted that if members were out of town or unable to come in and sign the decisions, that the chairman could sign them for the board. And we're just, it hasn't been a need, but if it arose, that we could just allow the vice chair to sign any decisions or vouchers if the chair was absent. So I think it's a reasonable request. I, you know, there hasn't been a need, but there may be in the future.
It's a good safe bet.
Yeah. So...
John, did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
There's a discussion, we're looking to see if we want to approve having the vice chair be able to sign vouchers and decisions in the absence of the chairman if the opportunity, if the situation arose.
I agree.
Okay, so, any discussion on that? It's pretty cut and dry. So I guess we can entertain a motion to that effect.
Make a motion, well, I shouldn't, because I'm the vice chairman, I guess.
That doesn't matter.
One of you guys. All right, I'll make the motion to authorize the vice chairman to sign, in the absence of the chair, to sign decisions or vouchers if the situation arises.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick. We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Hennig.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick aye.
Boba aye.
The other items might take up a little more time than we have, so...
Have you looked at any of the minutes yet?
I did, but I don't know if anybody else had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Take that as a negative.
All right, why don't we review the January minutes?
January 5?
Yes.
One second. Actually, we just, we jumped ahead just a little. We'll get back to you in one minute.
No problem. Make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the January 5, 22 meeting minutes.
As written?
As written.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the January minutes as written by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Hennig.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick aye.
Okay, so the minutes of January 5 are approved as written. All right, we're going to go back to the Laramie case.
Thank you, Mr. Hennig. So as I'm looking at the March 17 plan, the northeast corner is 8.2, 8 feet 2 inches off of that boundary, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the northwest corner is 9.8. So if we move both corners, 1 foot 10 inches to the south, you'll have a 10-foot setback on the northeast corner. You'll have, I don't, not going to do the math, it's a 9.8 plus 1 feet 2 inch, 1 feet 10 inches, and that still should get us just a hair under, a hair over 10 feet from the tank. So if the board would be amenable to voting in favor, conditioned on a submitting of revised plan that reflects those two, and again, we're moving it, just so we're clear here too, because of the overhang issue, this 8.2 is based off of the sonna tubes. So we're moving it 1 foot 10 inches from how the structure's shown on the plan, because if we're talking about another 13 inches for that overhang, now we're into the setback for the tank. So I don't think we should be fighting over that. I mean, we're further off the boundary line than the snow's shed is, and it's the 10 feet from the sonna tubes which is in. And I think that's a more than fair compromise from the Laramies. But I just want to make sure we're talking apples to apples here. So based off of this plan, March 17, 2022, what is reflected here, and I'll verify this with Mr. Tivnan, the engineer, these measurements are off of the sonna tubes and the corners there. So we'll move it 1 foot 10 inches from as it's shown on the March 17, 22 plan on both points, and bring that to the south. And we should be fine on the sonna tubes with the tank. And again, we've got our 10 feet from the sonna tubes to the snow boundary line.
Again, the structure's got to be, it's the closest point to the lot line, is what you determined.
Right.
And I believe when we were out there, it was a 13-inch overhang.
Correct.
So if a special permit was granted that allowed for no portion of the cabana to be closer than 9 feet...
Have to be 8 feet 11 inches. If it's 13 inches, we're going to be short an inch.
You could move one inch.
Yeah, you could move an inch.
You could even skew that building a little bit on the property line, so the building was on the property line.
Right, it's not parallel with...
Straight to the property line, right.
It's not parallel with the property line.
Correct. To gain that one inch.
Because the billing commissioner's going to look at it as the closest point of the structure to the, to the lot line.
Right, I understand that, that's right.
So, and we agree on 9 feet, that the closest point would be no closer than 9 feet. That way, your sonna tubes would be 10, and then the structure would be 9. Would that work?
Yes.
Okay. Any other board members have any discussion or comments?
Nope. Hopefully, we reached a compromise.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
The rest for all of us.
I'm good. I mean, if they took the problem enough, your property's smaller and current southerly, you made most of this.
Right.
Exactly.
It's permanent, because it's in the house line, well, but not the property line. But I'm willing to go with what we just proposed.
Okay. So the proposal would be that no portion of the structure would be closer than 9 feet?
Yes.
And that, I think, can be achieved without too much issue. All right. Anybody else want to speak on the matter?
I'd like to add a couple of conditions to that.
Oh, absolutely.
It's got some conditions to it. One, we would need a revised plan.
Okay.
For that, as part of the condition. And as far as the structure itself, no enclosing of the sidewalls. It's proposed as an open structure. I wouldn't want to see it closed in, whether it's a temporary or a permanent wall to put in there of any kind.
Okay.
And the...
If I could add one to that, all necessary permits need to be taken prior to construction.
Yeah, absolutely. And no structures, overhangs are, no structures or overhangs should encroach between the cabana and the lot line at any point. You could add another structure outside of this, this structure.
Oh, you mean, don't put another one of those metal glass, plastic rooms around the side or whatever?
Anything between, between the cabana and the property line, the...
Sure.
State's clear. State's clear, yeah. No further encroachment, I guess is the easiest way to describe it, to the property line from the cabana.
You want to make a motion with all of those things?
Yep, so the...
You can read my rights.
Just to be clear, what we just agreed to was the overhang would be no closer than 9 feet to the property line.
Yeah, or no portion of the structure.
No portion of the structure, okay. Make a motion for case number 2022-0117 Huff Road to give a special permit, I was right that time, to allow the, we're going to call it a cabana, of the structure to be no closer than 9 feet to the property line, with the following conditions, that is...
Can I just, for a minute?
No, I'm in the middle of making a motion, so you...
Continue, I'm sorry.
Conditions, all necessary permits to be pulled, which would include a sign-off from the board of health, as well as the conservation, because of the components of the septic system and being a late, late property. We only have verbals on everything, so I would assume that the building inspector would want to check the, sign off on his applications. No closing in of the sides, temporary or permanent. No further encroachment, which include any additional structures between the property line and the proposed cabana. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the special permit. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bombara. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of issuing the special permit?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is that an aye, John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Aye, Dan Hennig.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick aye.
Boba aye.
Okay, so we will get the special permit drafted and into you as quickly as possible. and into you as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, the next discussion item is Joseph Bylinski, case number 2021-04, 103 Shore Road. And it's the reconsideration of the board's decision on appeal and petition for enforcement and order for demolition and removal of non-complying, non-complying structure GLC 40A, numbers 7, 8, 14, and 15. Brian, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this?
No, I hope you all have Attorney Kenneth X's email. If not, I brought a copy with me. I trust you're all familiar with the remand order and everything that's led up to this point. But he set forth a proposed motion. I spoke with him yesterday, I spoke with him this morning. His request that I'll pass on to you, which is in his email, is that if you see fit to make a motion as he's drafted for you here, and that's the only thing you need to do. The decision's already written. This is really just a sort of confirmation of something you've already done.
Okay. I have the language for the motion, which I got from... Okay, office. And Jim, do you want to...
Didn't it make that motion, please?
Let's see. Do I need case number on it, Tim?
You're gonna have it in the, in the motion, in the body of that motion. It's in the second sentence.
Yeah, I see, 21, okay. I move to reconsider the board's decision on appeal and petition for enforcement and order of demolition and removal of non-complying structure GLC 40A subsection 7, 8, 14, and 15 in case number 2021-04. Joseph Bylinski, petitioner, dated and filed with the Douglas Town Clerk on June 10, 2021. Decision and issue a revised decision in the form provided by counsel.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that wrong?
Aye.
Okay. All right, aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forgit.
Fitzpatrick aye.
Bombara aye.
So we have two copies of that decision. And why don't we wrap this up and sign it? If you could pass it around, Jim. Actually, there isn't a spot in there for your signature because you weren't on the board at the time.
I'll just skip them.
So.
No problem.
Sign that, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. The next discussion item was comments the planning board requested, comments on the application for site plan review for 105 and 123 Gilboa Street, CRG. So they had, I think everybody's probably got a copy of that proposal, and they're just looking for any comments we may have. They make the decision, we just need to, if we have concerns, to bring them up. And I...
The whole package here, if anybody fits.
Yep. Have you guys gotten those packages, the whole thing? So, actually, Bob, would you want to speak on it? Just bring everybody up to speed. The proposal's in front of the planning board. It's their decision. They're just asking us if we have any thoughts or comments and...
I was asked briefly. I'll have you out of here by midnight.
That's why you mean briefly. Brian wants to go home tonight.
I was just gonna say, should I step out right now, or is this my last chance? For the record, Bob and Eric, Town Douglas Economic Development Project facilitator. I was asked to write a little letter synopsis of the project. You should have that in your packet.
Yep.
There are no zoning issues, so I think this is just a sheer formality of you just signing off on the project because there's nothing before you as far as action.
Correct.
The project itself is on the McIntyre Loom property off of Northeast Main Street. It's a proposed 1.1 million square foot warehouse. The access right now to the gravel site is on Northeast Main Street. I recommended that they build a bridge across the Monford River to access Gilboa Street to keep auto truck traffic off our local streets, which would be Northeast Main, Chow Street, North Street, Bridge, and Gilboa Street. The entire project is a $100 million project. Will employ about 450 jobs when it's built out. There are no known zoning issues with the project, and they will be purchasing 17.7 acres from the town, which is under a purchase and sale agreement as we speak. Hasn't been finalized. If you remember, at the last town meeting, there was an eminent domain piece that was discovered. We did not own the piece that we were selling. So that has now been resolved, and the attorneys are going back and forth, Town Council with their attorneys, to sell that 17.7 acres. A lot of questions came up with me. Does the warehouse include the dam and Gilboa Pond? The simple answer is no. Town will retain ownership of the parking lot, Gilboa Pond, and the dam. So I'm willing to entertain any questions to satisfy your appetite for answers.
I did personally take some time to review it, and I just, I see they have an exit out onto Northeast Main Street, which it says it's for emergency access only. And it does show a gate on it, so just, I guess, I'd like to ask the planning board to just be sure that that's the only thing it's used for, is emergency.
We're actually planning two gates on that one. One at the road because it is a lengthy, lengthy road. Keep the trucks off of it on the warehouse side and vehicles off the Northeast Main Street side.
And when I reviewed it, I didn't realize prior that how close the warehouse is to the houses on Northeast Main Street. Is there any provisions there for, you know, for lighting? To make sure the lighting isn't shining on the houses? They're quite close.
They brought that up at the last planning board meeting. They're using directional LEDs where they say there will be zero light overflow outside the site.
Perfect.
The one thing nobody realizes is the roof of that structure is below street level of Northeast Main Street. So if you're standing on Northeast Main Street, in other words, the McIntyre retail site, you'll be looking down at this site. Even though it's a 43-foot structure, there will be a 30-foot cut in that area, and it's already 20 feet below the street level. There'll be very little light coming out of that. Most of it is directed down with the LEDs.
I know, they can sell lighting now that's, you can...
Yeah, it's not like a light bulb which is unidirectional. They have these little light diodes that just point straight down, and they direct all of them down. Plus, there'll be shields on the side.
Yep. And are they, are there any plans for minimizing the noise from the site?
That was brought up at the last planning board meeting. The only side for noise would be against the solar farm, and they were proposing putting in a fenced area, a noise-absorbing fence. Blackstone Logistics, the other warehouse in Oxbridge, had the same problem against the residents against Lackey Dam Road. They have since installed, I believe it was a 15-foot sound...
They don't have anything installed yet, but they're doing...
No, it's proposed.
Yeah, they're supposed to be doing some kind of a noise barrier.
And it's all, I think it's concrete panels too, or something.
I haven't seen yet what it is.
But it is sound-absorbing, and that would be the only side. You've got 100-foot buffer of trees against Gilboa Pond. As you're driving down Lackey Dam Road, Gilboa Pond, you won't even see this thing.
Bob, wasn't that, weren't they doing a night, a night overflow light survey on that anyways? For their final plans? What is it, night sky, I think they call it?
Yeah. That is part of that lighting plan. The big issue right now is traffic, obviously. And we're trying to keep the truck traffic out of Douglas.
Where exactly is it crossing the river?
Just downstream of the dam. It's the narrowest point.
Okay.
There was a thought process to go closer to old Lackey Dam Road to get into that intersection, but then they lose their ability for gravity feed for sewer. Right now, believe it or not, from the floor elevation of that proposed warehouse to the bridge is a 30-foot differential. It's all downhill. Trucks will be climbing into the site. But the further you go up Gilboa towards the Shell station, you actually raise the bridge elevation, and you lose that ability for gravity feed. Then you're hitting a crossover point for pumping station. And they're trying to avoid a pump station.
Sure.
We're putting in a pump station. Is everybody familiar with existing pump station is? The Town of Douglas right across the mill? Almost a beam, the dam, that little fenced-in area you see? That's the old pump station. That will be replaced by energy-efficient pump station.
That's for a different project.
That's for the town.
Yeah, but not to do with this...
Not this project.
I mean, just in expediting that meeting, I like to stay on that project.
Yep. Okay. Well, those are the only things that I saw when I reviewed it. Anybody else had any other concerns? So the paperwork that we got from the planning board just asks if we have any concerns, comments or concerns. If we do, we can list them here. If we don't, then we're fine. We'll just send it back with no objections, period.
They would, CRG, developer CRG is not pursuing any zoning variances whatsoever.
Yeah, this is just a, they're looking for our input, period.
You want to put on there about your lighting?
Yeah, I guess we could, we'll put on there we just have concerns about lighting.
It will be addressed.
Slight pollution, the rest.
I had brought that up in an earlier meeting with the developer before they even started the permitting process. Can a few neighbors address that concern as well?
I just want to say hi to Bob first.
Hey, John.
What part of that, when you're talking about the exit for the trucking, is it to the right of the Shell station or to the left?
Oh, it's definitely to the left. It's within 100 feet of the dam, downstream of the dam. The bridge is almost dumping into the end of the mill complex, where Kennedy Excavating is right now.
Yeah.
Almost directly across.
I see.
Yeah, they're nowhere near the Shell station.
Okay. We're just gonna make a comment that we're concerned about the lighting and possible noise, and it's up to them to address it through site plan review, it's just...
That's right, and it is being addressed.
It's strictly a comment, there's no opposition to it, just a comment.
Right.
Okay. Well, I don't think there's any vote needed. I think it's just, we'll send this along to the, to the planning board, and good luck with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are they predicting any timeframe to start? I mean, obviously, they need all their approvals.
The permit, right. Once you get all the approvals, we're looking at a four, five-month process, which is typical for that size project.
Right.
So you're talking summer.
Yep. And how long will it take to build this structure?
You're saying 10 months?
Really?
Yes, 1.1 million square feet.
I won't be busy at all.
We're gonna buy Ken...
They'll be under construction control anyway, right?
Yeah, but it's still, every inspection, I go out. I'll be out there probably every day, sometimes twice a day.
Yep.
There'll be pouring 1,000 yards of concrete a day. The floors, 26 acres of floors.
Let's put the rate right now over at Blackstone Valley.
They have their first pour Sunday night.
Unbelievable.
Over at Amazona. We dumped at Amazona, the other one.
The one down in, right on the other side of 146.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, they're already...
Pouring footings and...
They're already pouring footings, oh.
Oh, yeah. They're doing an earth pour. They're not even falling it, trenching, doing earth pours. That's all tilt panels, foot panels in place.
A good time to be in the concrete business.
Oh, yes. About 40,000 yards going in in this building.
Yeah. Nope. Wish everybody well on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob, appreciate it.
Did we get anything on that subdivision?
Yeah, and there is a whole submittal here. Again, they're just looking for our comments, but it's, there are no zoning issues at all, as long as they...
No zoning issues?
No, no, I did look through it thoroughly, and there was no zoning issues. It's strictly looking for our input, which, I guess, as long as they comply with subdivision control and they...
No zoning issues.
Work on their, on their, I mean, obviously, they could get grant waivers to them, but there are no zoning issues, so... Okay, then, Ken, it's been a while. Would we have any update on North Brown?
I just spoke with Neil Reiviki on Tuesday. I told him that we're now getting, the weather's broke. I want a full schedule of what he's gonna propose to do for finishing up Phase 1, Phase 2. Not necessarily, you know, final pave on the roads, but I want all those filtration ponds and everything taken care of. I want to know what the schedule is. I was hoping to have the schedule today before the meeting. I could have given it to the board, but I haven't gotten it. So as soon as I get it, I'll distribute it out to the board so you can see it. He was saying that they're hoping to actually finish foundation work on... He was saying that they're hoping to actually finish foundation work on Nautical Way, the center road. And so I just said to him, well, if that's your proposal, I also want to know what your proposal is for the last loop of the road. And he said they actually want to try and get started on that before the end of the year. So, I mean, I don't see a problem with that. I personally would like to see that cleaned up, so I get that site cleaned up-- --with all this stumpage and piles of rubble they got around there. So that's where we were at with that.
Okay. I actually took a ride through there about a week ago myself, only the third time. The town engineer was keeping a log of the affordable units and the--
Still doing that.
Still doing that?
Yeah, so he's got to, he's got to have, I think it's maintained, basically, what it breaks down to is about 14 affordable units per section that have to be sold, but it doesn't have to go necessarily that. He could sell 33 units at a time, and he has to have, I believe it was, two affordables that have to be sold at the same time, so he had two or six.
I believe, I believe it's 25%. Because there was, we were 12 and 4 on the first time around. So how many, how many foundations are in that third phase, that new third phase?
Four.
There's four foundations in there?
But of the four, there's three affordables which are sold.
Okay. Just watch your percentage, because we held them accountable. They may make sure that they maintain the sale of those affordable units. Because if you don't, we're gonna be in trouble at the end of it.
So right now, what he told me Tuesday was they have five affordables that are sold in the last month that are scheduled for completion to get going. Because I keep on about that, you know, I don't want to hear how you sold all the market rates, and we're sitting behind on the affordables. So we keep a tally on the, on the sheet. We got the affordables marked out.
Okay.
We keep a tally on them.
I personally would like to see you give, keep us up to date a little more. Even though you're monitoring that, it falls under this board to oversee that project.
And we're adamant about keeping the affordable units sold ahead. I know they're ahead right at this moment, but at the beginning, they're way behind. So what I'll do is, for the next meeting, I'll try, I'd have an actual number breakdown of units sold, affordable units sold, affordable units available.
Billy used to give us a little map that showed the whole thing, and then he'd have the affordables, the color-coded and red or green.
That's what we have on the board now.
So that would be helpful for--
Yeah, it would.
I can make a copy of that, and I can update it on that. We can do a color code on it so that you can see which ones are, which are statuses.
Yeah.
But even, I think he had it on the side, he had the sold ones. I think he outlined them.
Yeah.
Some system that he used, so we could look at it and quickly tell. Because what we did at the very beginning is we held up any more foundations until he got his affordables up to where they need to be.
Right. Well, I've told him that right along. I said, "You're not gonna be, believe me," I said, "you're not gonna get any occupancy permits or final sign-offs if you're behind on your affordable sold."
Perfect.
Keeping, keeping up to date. But I do have that same chart. It's color-coded there.
Yep.
The affordables are highlighted in the deeper red. We can go through and mark all these, the sold units where they are. He still has a couple of units on that Phase 2 that are not sold, that were affordables. So I can get you that update.
And you're doing a good job to keep them under control, from what I, from what I understand. I just want to make sure that we keep a handle on it, because historically, they're sometimes straight off the path.
Yeah, when I go through, I notice, I'm gonna say it was like the beginning of Phase 2, but there was actually a unit there that wasn't even blasted.
That's the affordable.
Oh, it is.
So if it's a nice day, they have the doors open, they can see them. I believe there was a total of five affordables in the end of Phase 1, Phase 2. I don't know exactly where the breakpoint was. That hadn't been sold, and that was getting concerning to me with the fact that he had sold out the rest of Phase 2, it was already sold out. I believe 72, I did, just issued a CO today on, and 68, he said he'd be calling me next week for a final on that. And that's when I started questioning with regards to the affordables. He's got three affordables sold in Nautical Way, but he's still got those available there. So I, I don't know the strategy behind what they're doing there, but as long as the numbers are working the way the numbers need to work, you know.
He told us that that was all sold out. When we agreed to let him go into the third phase, that was sold. The market rates were all sold.
I think he--
You can interpret it any way you want. I was told that it was sold out.
I think he did say that.
Told that it was sold out.
I think he did say the entire Phase--
Correct.
--2 was sold out.
Correct, because--
Which, sales can fall through. I mean, it's, the only thing, it's common knowledge, obviously, that they're not moneymakers. The affordable's not moneymakers, we just don't want to get stuck at the end with--
So the affordables, when he started off the project, where 189 was their market rate for them, the affordables just got raised up to 285, almost 286. So it's becoming, it's not a moneymaker, but they're not losing money on them at this point. So he said, he doesn't know what went on, but in the last, in the last month, they've sold five.
That's right.
The retention ponds. All that washout and everything else that you had--
That's all gonna be on--
Now by the system, and all that, all that's been corrected?
That's all gonna be on the schedule. He told, what he told me Tuesday was, they're bringing in a landscape company. They're starting at the entrance to the site, and they're working all the way down Phase 1, Phase 2, redoing bottoms, redoing plantings, making sure vegetation's there all the way down through. And I said, "My big concern was this, three of those little retention water rain gardens, I guess they're called, that don't drain out within 72 hours," I says, "and this has been an ongoing issue." They had a basement flood out at Number 31 because of one of those rain gardens. So I said, "You know, this needs to be corrected, and this needs to be corrected this spring. We're not going through another year with this not getting completed before you continue on with your project." And I see at the other end of Nautical Way, and the first two phases of the project are sitting the same way they look now.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see a schedule on that at our next meeting. This has been going on since Pam was on this board.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I, as soon as I get the schedule, I was hoping to have it for this meeting, because I did talk with them Tuesday with regards to the schedule and its completion for these phases that are already there. And that's what I want from them.
Again, I would like to see a schedule, so--
Yeah, if you could get it to us for the next meeting.
To get it.
Whatever you gotta do to--
Whatever he's gotta do to do it, he can--
I'll get that, I'll get the affordables in the market, you know, what's been sold, what's open, what's permitted, what's not permitted.
Perfect. That'd be good. That'd be really good.
Thanks, Ken.
So I guess we can get back to the minutes of December.
Do we, do we need to capture Brian any? Do we need a friend?
No, I think he's free to go.
If he wants to go. I'm not trying to get rid of you, but if you want--
He enjoys our company.
What's going on here?
All right, all right, all right, brother.
I'll get going. You don't want me anymore.
No, 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 you're welcome to stay, but I was just trying to help you.
No, I mean, if you're just doing housekeeping matters--
We are.
--leave me here. So that's fine.
You got a ride to go home, so I was just trying to--
You have a little bit more of a drive than you guys, I think.
Yeah. I think so.
I'll get working on the decision you voted to--
Okay.
I'll get that back to you as soon as I can. I'm on vacation next week, but when I get back, I'll get it to you.
Great.
Thanks.
Good to see everybody again.
Thank you.
Take care.
Aye.
Aye. Did we have a motion on the December minutes? I think we did. If you came back.
We did the January ones.
January.
Yeah.
Yeah, I only checked off January on my thing, so.
We go to December.
We do in December, Nick?
Yeah, somehow we--
Sean Holland was in this one.
That's good.
Not much to it. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of December 1st, 2021.
Okay, we have a, as written.
As written.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara, to approve the minutes of December 1st, as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Epstein. I wasn't here.
Right.
Good catch, buddy.
Yep. Very good. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Patrick, aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay, the minutes of December 1st are approved as written. And then we have the March 2nd minutes.
So I'm not listed on attendance, but I am listed at adjourning time.
Jim, I didn't get them. She didn't send the PDF this time.
You were here at the last meeting, weren't you?
I was. I was.
You were here at the March meeting?
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't get them. You got them?
I did. They were in my, they were in my packet.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah. No?
It's not mixed in with the other minutes, no? They're not all together in the same paperclip?
I don't think so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 2nd, 2022, meeting minutes with the edit of adding Jim Palmer to the attendance at the top of the page, as written, otherwise as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ryan Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 8:27.
Thanks, Johnny.